Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for Tuckahoe. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you do a roll call? I'm sorry, may I ask everyone to please settle down? And if you want to have a conversation, you're welcome to step out. I'm sorry, Camille.
Present.
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 Present, and we have no appointments today, but we do have one presentation by the senior interns for the Department of Public Works, so you may come forward now. It's nice to see interns smiling at the end of their internship.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. The crew behind me are students from Eastchester High School Intern Program, sponsored by Julie Myers every year. And this year, Tuckahoe took on six interns from the WISE program to handle two projects for DPW. And what they did, just to summarize, but I'm sure they're excited about getting up to speak as well, but they took an inventory, one of the projects is taking an inventory of our LED lights, streetlights throughout all of Tuckahoe. We started this program in-house. We started installing these LED lights and transferring them over. And what the interns have done is solidify the fact that we are fully engaged with LED lights at this moment. And they updated our spreadsheet with Con Edison, which is a savings to the residents of Tuckahoe. The second project, when I spoke with the MS4 at the last meeting, I spoke about stormwater mapping. So if you go into our website, you look at our stormwater map, it's color-coded. So now, what these interns, these amazing interns have done is labeled a number, there's a tag on each catch basin. So we were able to identify that number with the several outfalls that we have along the Bronx River. So if there's ever a spill at catch basin number 366, they know exactly where that spill is going to end up in the Bronx River. So that's just an amazing accomplishment, and I thank them. They're very energetic and enthusiastic. But without further ado, I'm going to let them summarize their projects.
Thank you.
I just want to introduce them in order. Nicole Williams will be going to Purdue University for Engineering. Adrienne Lee, Columbia University, Computer Engineering. Mary Roach, SUNY Binghamton for Engineering. Nicholas Lanzetta, Villanova University for Engineering. Rocco Luciano, Villanova University for Engineering. Joey Allen, Northeastern University for Engineering. And Nicole will be our first speaker.
Pretty impressive.
Hello, village of Tuckahoe. The six of us standing here are Eastchester High School seniors interning at Tuckahoe's Department of Public Work, or the DPW for short, for our high school WISE program. This program is designed to give us seniors working experience before entering college. For the last few weeks, we split up into two groups in order to help the DPW improve the environment of Tuckahoe. Working with the DPW and the citizens of Tuckahoe has been an amazing experience. Everyone was extremely helpful and extremely kind, making our jobs significantly easier.
When you look down on the streets, the grates you see on the side of the road are catch basins strategically placed to catch stormwater runoff and move it away from streets and homes. You can see the location of these catch basins on the DPW's website, and these all lead to outfalls located in and along the Bronx River. Tuckahoe has seven outfalls leading to the Bronx River, each inspected twice a year. To keep the river clean, Tuckahoe ensures that the water runoff and sewage are separate and that only the street runoff will go to the river.
In the event of a spill, the fire department can install a bladder into an outfall to prevent any oil or other toxins from entering the waterways. As a part of our internship, we work to attach each catch basin ID number to a specific outfall along the Bronx River, so that in the event of a spill, the fire department can work quickly to install the bladder to the correct outfall. Additionally, we work to update the lighting infrastructure.
That's where I come in. We're part of the light crew. My name is Nick Lanzetta. So I just want to talk a little bit about the difference between an LED and an incandescent bulb. So the most of the streetlights here in Tuckahoe are LEDs. They're more flat, and they're a combination of smaller bulbs that as a whole take way less energy than an incandescent, which in turn is meaning saving a lot of money. So an incandescent is like one bulb with a filament, and it requires a lot of energy to power, like a lot of energy, a lot of money. But LEDs is like 100 smaller bulbs, and they're like flat and requires a lot less wattage.
Hello, so I'm also part of the light crew, and I just want to say, me, Nick, and Joe surveyed the entire village of Tuckahoe and kept inventory of which streetlights were LED and which were incandescent, as well as each light's location, identification number, and wattage. We did this in order to figure out how many more incandescent bulbs needed to be switched over to LED, since LED lights are significantly cheaper, so we could save money for the village's taxpayers. In total, we estimate that we have saved about $5,000 to $6,000 monthly for taxpayers in total in the village due to the greater cost efficiency brought about by LED lights.
Hi, I'm Joey. I was the third person working on the light project. We would just like to thank the Department of Public Works, especially Frank DiMarco and the village of Tuckahoe for this amazing opportunity. Our internship at the department was a great way for us to interact with Tuckahoe residents and learn about the infrastructure of the town. Everyone at the department was extremely helpful and knowledgeable, and we were able to learn a lot from them. Going to college next year, we are extremely appreciative of the opportunity to gain valuable experience, and the village of Tuckahoe was a remarkable place to gain this experience. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, guys. Did you guys figure out the lighting timing? Did you guys figure that out? They're like, what? I have all faith in them, that they can do that. Thank you very much to the interns, and Frank, thank you for taking them on and giving them this opportunity. Can we ask questions? Does anybody have questions for the interns? Any questions? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Nice job. So we do have one public hearing today, and that is the public hearing to consider a proposed local law regarding affordable affirmatively furthering fair housing within the village of Tuckahoe. And I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Gary, you sound like you want to say something. So you pulling? Yes, yes. So if you could give an overview of the law? I wanted to open it up and then let you talk, right?
Oh, I was just moving the microphone.
Okay.
Getting ready.
Thank you. So can you just give an overview of the law, what the law does cover and what it does not would be important?
So I think it's broken out into sections, and there is complicated formulas in here, so I'll try to simplify it. So affordable housing, who does that impact, or who's going to come in and be able to live in an affordable housing unit? So what they base it on is basically the area median income for Westchester, which HUD determines. And what happens is, sorry, is that somebody who's going to be able to go here can't make more than 80% of that number. So if the median income for Westchester, say, is $100,000, I cannot make more than $80,000, or I just make too much money for this program. But there's also a low side on this, too. I also have to be able to afford it. I have to pay my taxes, I have to pay my principal, my interest, and those in a combination can't be more than 1/3 of my gross income. So there's a sweet spot here. So you can't make too much, or you just can't make too little. If I have, if I'm on $1,000 Social Security, this really wouldn't apply to me, because I just wouldn't be able to afford the taxes or anything else on here. So it's that person or family that makes right in that area that's able to afford it, but doesn't make too much money.
Thanks, David.
So, okay, so that's who can come in here. And then what does this impact, this law? And what it does impact, so it's really new development. It doesn't affect anything that's out there now. And if I'm a developer going to develop a co-op, a condo, a rental unit with more than 10 units, then it's, bottom line is basically I have to put 10% of the units aside for this affordable housing program. So if I'm a developer going to build nine apartments, doesn't apply to me, doesn't affect me at all. So it's only 10 or over. So these are fairly large developments that it would impact. I don't see any on the horizon right now, but we never know, because tomorrow we may get an application in for a big development. What does the developer get? So the developer now gets a little bit of a bonus, they get a little bit of a streamlined process to get through the planning or whatever boards they need to get through to get to the end. You know, there's initial meetings with the developer saying, hey, this is what the issues are, this is what we have to get through. So it's a little bit of a streamlined process. Then it's built, I own it, I'm there, I put my money, you know, I bought this place, this affordable, and then I want to sell it. So there's also restrictions on me selling it, because you want to keep it affordable. So anything, if I own this condo and I want to sell it in 10 years, I could only make so much money on it, and it has to stay affordable. And there's a calculation through that also. So that's kind of the overview. This is definitely a fluid draft here, so I think you should listen to the public and see where we go with everything. We could, again, make changes, we're just, whatever you're looking to do.
Okay, and Gary, do you know how many municipalities have adopted the affordable?
I don't know.
David, do you know?
I would think most are.
Because I think.
Have some form.
Yeah, have some form of, obviously, this is based on the Westchester County Model Law. This was tailored to Tuckahoe specifically. Other communities may use portions of this, may use, you know, less of a percentage, more of a percentage, but it's kind of whatever works for your own municipality.
Okay. So today, we will be hearing any input and anyone who'd like to weigh in. I ask that when you come forward, that you please keep it to three minutes, so that we give everybody an opportunity to voice their opinion. So who would like to come up first? Sure.
Good evening, members of the board. John DeBattito, 19 Stevens Avenue, Eastchester, President Bronx Manor Association. Thank you for hearing me, because, you know, we're a little disenfranchised from you, because we have so many school districts, POs, this and that. We don't get to vote, I've been saying this for years, like a broken record, in village elections. But we have Tuckahoe School, Eastchester Service, you know, everything, you know, you guys appoint planning and zoning, and everything you do affects us, because, you know, remember, it's all one big, we're all one big Petri dish. So I just wanted to ask one question. What's in place now? Because I think this was always around, right? When you build something, you have to have X amount, or was there nothing around?
So we repealed the previous ordinance that was in place, and there were parts of the ordinance that we had not looked at in a long time, and we wanted to make sure that we were up to, current and up to date.
Okay, so.
So this is a brand-new, yeah.
And is this like a federal or a county, or what's the guideline that's?
So we're following Westchester County's model ordinance, and we adopted, we adopted portions of it, and some portions we changed.
But villages and towns are allowed to input and take in and take out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And so I think ours is closely modeled after Bronxville's.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Just one suggestion in the future. If maybe you guys, I know you guys go to different parts of the village, if you could kind of reach out, if we could have something, if we could set up.
Could do that. We could still do that.
Visit Bronx Manor one day and have something, if we could get some space, or we could come to you, just so it kind of can all work, so people can know.
Yeah.
Because once misinformation gets there, then it's, you know.
And we can.
It'll work for you guys.
We can still do that. We do have, the public hearing will still be open in July, likely.
Okay.
So we still can have an information kind of session. Were you saying something?
I could, I could reach out, I could email you guys.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
Hello, my name is Alicia Compass, and I am a former resident of 22 Wallace Street. And I think the adoption of this law would be helpful in affording people with various different incomes a place to live. I was living here, actually, not too long ago, in April, I left. Housing in Tuckahoe is very difficult to afford for all sources of income. Housing usually should be only 30% of your income, and more than, most use more than half of their income to afford housing. I think that it would be helpful if we could open up more affordable housing for all various incomes, middle class, low income. I think that there is some prejudice in the village, and so it is not afforded for everyone to live here comfortably with different sources of income.
Okay. Thank you for your input. So just before we go on to the next one, I just want to gently teach the kids some etiquette. So for everyone, if we're in session, if the meeting is in session, I'm going to ask that you not walk out and in, and that you not eat in here. So if you want to drink or eat, that you just step out while we're having the meeting, okay? You're welcome, no problem. Anyone else? Yes. Not yet? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm Lewis Campata, resident in Eastchester, 8 Pasadena Road, Bronxville. I was a resident here for 33 years and just recently moved to Eastchester, but my kids do attend Tuckahoe schools. As a design professional, one of the questions I have for you is, what if any zoning incentives are there for the increase or the proposed affordable housing law?
So we'll take, we'll take all questions, and we probably will have to have an information session so that we can answer all of that, otherwise, we'd be having a lot of dialogue, unless there's an easy answer to that, Gary.
There's no easy answer. Good question.
Exactly.
Right now, there's nothing in the model ordinance, as you probably saw, but that's something that's open for, I would think, the board would be open for discussion to give, incentivize a developer to say, okay, this is, this is what I get for doing that. It's a good question.
Okay.
Right now, you know, again, like I said, I think it's a fluid process, and they're going to take all the information, and then we'll revisit it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Gina Lee, you had your hand up?
Hello, Gina Lee, 1 Westview Avenue. I was a little bit late, so I didn't hear when you first proposed this. I was just wondering, like, what is your plan? Because I know there has to be some sort of plan.
Plan in terms of what? What do you mean?
Development.
This is, so this, this local law has nothing to do with any building that the village will be doing. It's, these are provisions put in place so that if there's new development, if new developers come in and want to build a condo, a co-op, or a building, that there are some guidelines for them to follow. So it's not the village building, it's anyone coming in that wants to build.
I totally understand that.
Yeah.
Because when I was on the village board, there was a lot of discussion about building 10-story buildings. There was some owners of establishments that were willing to sell to developers to build these high-rise buildings.
Well, we do have zoning laws currently in place that would prevent certain high-rise buildings, so that's a separate issue.
Okay. I just want to be sure that we're not, like, changing that. Because honestly, having kids in Tuckahoe schools, and I'm sure Eastchester, too, we cannot fit that many more children in these schools.
So again, I'm not sure where you're, if you're, if you believe that we're building something, we're not.
I know the village is not building.
And there, and there is currently no plan to accept any proposals, I mean, there are none before us. So this is really just to ensure that we do have some laws in place in the, in the event that someone is going to propose building.
Okay.
But we do have zoning laws that address what you're saying that's separate than this.
Right. I totally get that.
So if those laws were to be changed, we'd have to have another public hearing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Hello, my name is Samantha Christian, and I'm on 72 Main Street. And, let's see, and I am definitely in favor of the furthering of affordable housing, and I think you actually must adopt this law into the village of Tuckahoe. Whether you have a plan or not, we need to actually have the basis and allow the planning to start. And so I think the reason, a good reason, is that three, three months ago, you passed the Declaration of Human Rights, and it would be quite embarrassing not to pass affordable housing in Tuckahoe, which shelter is a human right, and, and it's a very, job, job security and wage security isn't just important, but shelter security. People need to feel that they can live without worries, without having to manage every month. And, you know, right now, Mom and I, we live together, and we're managing, but it would be great for, if new developments come, to have affordable housing made available, acquired by the law, so that people don't have to worry about managing. They can have that social security, shelter security for generations to come and not, and not worry about it. And that's, I think, the moral incentive for passing the affordable housing. And it, it also diversifies and strengthens our community. We get more, more people with more skills, more creativity, more experiences, and it just helps everybody to have more affordable housing wherever they live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Peggy Goddard, I'm at 21 Fairview Avenue. I just have two questions, I guess, on the proposal itself. The first is, from a geographic perspective, is it only in the village of Tuckahoe itself? I mean, we're in the town of Eastchester, but this is only for the village itself, correct?
That's correct.
And then for the actual developments that would fall under this, are those, does that, would that include developments that were potentially for rental, or would this be more for purchase, units for purchase?
So it's for both, but I'll let.
It's for both. So, yeah, but it has to be over 10, 10 units are over.
Right.
So if somebody's going to come in and build six units, this doesn't apply to them. And if 10 units are over, it's generally 10%. So if a developer comes in and says, listen, I'm going to, I want to build a 10-unit apartment building here.
One.
Then you say one, you know, and hey, you got to, you have to put one aside for affordable housing.
Okay, gotcha. So if somebody wanted to develop, like, a property that would be a rental property, they would allocate 10% of that under this if it was more than 10 units?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Anyone who has not yet spoken? Is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, sorry.
My name is, sorry, my name is Jeff Ira, and I live in Rogers Street. I think that it's, I'd like to echo what she said. I think it brings a great amount of diversity, artists, young kids, veterans, people that are just getting started. Rents are pretty crazy in Tuckahoe right now. I'm a renter. And the other thing is, honestly, I don't know why you limit it to 10%. That means, in a 10-unit building, one unit, why couldn't it be 20%? To, you know, since there's nothing being built now, anyway. Just, just a thought.
Thank you. Hold on. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to weigh in? Okay. Oh, sorry, there's one other person here in person, so let me start with, with Kent.
I think I'm starting to enjoy this a little bit. Ken Folia, 28 Bronx Street. I just have a couple of questions to better understand.
We'll write them down.
Okay, thank you. Basically, is this a mandate coming down from the federal government to local municipalities?
So, Gary, do you want to, it's not a mandate?
Okay.
It's not a mandate.
Okay, fair enough. Also, do we get any tax breaks, or any incentives, or any monies from the federal or state government when we adopt this?
So, we don't.
We don't.
We don't.
Because I understand a lot of these programs.
Right.
Do filter down from the federal level, and I wanted to understand a little bit more where this all derives from.
Yeah, I think, was it you who sent me the email about the CDBG grants?
Uh, no.
Okay, never mind.
And online, I believe the law is on our website right now, the breakdown of.
Yes.
How it works, the percentages and all that.
Yeah. And again.
So people can go there and read this.
Exactly. They can go there and read that, and then provide input, because this is the public hearing, and we will, it will be open again next month, so that way, people can still weigh in, and we can make some decisions.
And when is the final vote on accepting this?
It'll probably be next month. We'll have the public hearing open, and we'll probably close it, but that's, all depends on what the board votes, and how they decide if they want to close it or not.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Zoom.
Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm actually looking at this remotely, and I haven't been able to hear a word. The audio's been so bad, so I missed a lot of the conversation. So will there be another hearing? I'm actually traveling right now, but.
David, you can answer if you can hear me.
I understand this better, because I've been sitting on here for half an hour, and I picked up maybe 10% of what's been said.
Sure, Mr. Wilson, just to reiterate, the mayor said this public hearing will stay open until at least next month.
And so the next, the next Board of Trustees meeting is the next hearing, public hearing?
Yeah, the hearing will stay open until at least July 11th.
Okay, so the July meeting, and the law is posted, I see, and I understand what it's saying, but it's been difficult to understand the conversations. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Is anyone else on Zoom? You're not able to put a microphone or something closer to you guys, so? I apologize, it's just the best audio that we can do right now.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has not yet spoken that would like to weigh in? Okay. Gina, I think you had your hand up?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. I'm not opposed to affordable housing. I just, I think that it would be beneficial to our veterans that live in the area, our senior citizens, like, there should be certain criteria. Our police department, the new hires, fire department, it should go to these people first, our own residents, rather than have people moving from other areas here first.
Okay, so one thing we cannot do is show preferential treatment to the affordable housing units. It could get us into trouble, we could get sued, because someone feels that we're discriminating against them. So the, the housing ordinance is written so that it's available to anyone who needs it.
Okay. Okay. There's no certain criteria, or just anybody from anywhere. Our residents don't take preference over anybody else.
So we can't, we can't craft a local law that gives preferential treatment, and, and be accused of doing just that. Okay, and one more, if you have already spoken, and then we're gonna move on.
Just wanted to give an update, uh, division, sorry. The Human Rights Division does state that there is no, like, you can't choose one over the other, so that's with the Division of Human Rights of Westchester. Also, um, there would be more residents, there'd be more, um, sources of income in the community, and more people paying into taxes and, uh, different things that help the community if you allowed more people in. To say that, you know, maybe this person should get it over that person, it's kinda discriminatory in nature, and that should be considered, that all, um, availability for all. I have children that were in this district, and it became very unaffordable to live here. And I just think that was inhumane.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on the board who would like to comment at this point? No?
Um, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, how frequently are buildings of this size built in Tuckahoe?
So when's the last time that we built?
A 10-plus apartment building.
I think it's, it's been a while. There's a project going on at Wallace, which just would not impact, because they already have their approvals.
Exactly.
But-
What do you mean that?
Prior to that, it's, you know, you may have your quarry place.
Yeah, there are a couple lots that, that are zoned residential where that could happen, but they're very few, you know?
There's very few space for it.
Yeah, there's no applications pending before any of the board's, um, to build something that would be an excessive 10.
The likely immediate, short-term, or even medium-term impact of this would be-
Right.
-minimal, if at all.
Yeah, it, the development's going to happen. It's, all you're doing is telling the developer, if you develop more than 10 units, you must put a piece of that for affordable housing.
Right, and it's, obviously, it's very minimal, you know, if, if you build even 40 units, that's only four, you know, and to somebody's point, that's, you know, it's not a lot of people that would have the opportunity to benefit from this.
So I, I looked at the Westchester County Housing Department, and I, just so that people know, there are comparable model housing laws that look very much like this one with the 10%. In Ardsley, and that was adopted in 2013, Pound Ridge, also in 2013, Hastings on Hudson, which is slightly different, the Town of Salem, the Village of Pleasantville, the Town of Bedford in 2012, Town of North Castle in 2011, uh, the Village of Scarsdale in 2011, and the Village of Bronxville earlier this, uh, last year. So these are all comparable in, in, like, socioeconomic status and demographics to the Village of Tuckahoe in, in many ways, um, some of them actually more affluent, um, and also small, small places that have a look and feel that I think people are very interested in protecting. And so, um, and for, some of these have been in place for nearly a decade now, and there has not been a discernible change in the look and feel of any of those places, so I think that's an important thing to note. And that, you know, uh, the other thing is that before Gary mentioned this, this idea of 80% of the AMI, so just so you know, you would qualify at 80% of AMI in Westchester County because it's such an affluent and wealthy county. A family of four making $110,900 would qualify under this program, which is actually very high. And so you're talking about, you know, these are, are, um, this is a kind of program that could help teachers, it could help sanitation workers, it could help, it could help a lot of people. Um, and I think that's an important thing to remember when we're talking about. The other thing is that it will help bring people here that can work in the service industry, um, you know, who should not have to travel an hour to work in, 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 uh, in their community, um, so.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. So the public hea- hearing will remain open. I encourage everyone, if you have not yet had an opportunity, oh, there's another person? Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anne Marie, did you wanna say something? Anne Marie, you had your hand up, do you wanna say something?
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I just have one question. Um, I know you're not planning right now to put any buildings up. I know this is just the laws that you're talking about, but are you aware that Tuckahoe Schools and Eastchester Schools have no room for any more children? So I hope you take that into consideration in the future of considering putting more buildings up in this village. This village is one square mile, and it's overpopulated to begin with.
So, David, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I think I just wanna, if I can just say it as well, I think a lot of people on Zoom are asking the question. I think what's going on is here, is this is not for a particular unit or a building right now, so if, if a developer wants to come in and find a piece of property and put up a building as of right, they can do that for 10 or 20 units. This is just saying one or two of those units has to be affordable. So it's not additional units, it wouldn't be an additional impact, it's just out of the whole, some of it has to be affordable. So we keep talking about putting more kids in the school, what happens was, is that when a developer comes in, it'll go through the planning board process, if it's 10 or more units, and they'll look at these types of things, they'll look at traffic impacts, and they'll look at parking, and they'll look at schools, and they'll look at all this kinda stuff. So none of that would necessarily change with this. It would just be one of those units is affordable.
Right.
Or a 10%, or two of them.
Right.
So nothing, so nothing would change.
Right. So I'm, you know, I've, I've heard a few people contact me before this meeting to say that there is rumor that we are looking to build affordable housing. Not that that's a bad thing, but it's not accurate. Tuckahoe is not building anything, and anything that's already in place, our zoning laws for wherever you can build in, in residential, they're already in place. All that we're doing is saying that a portion of whatever is built has to be set aside for affordable. That's it. We're not building anything. Whoever has said that to you, if that's what you've heard, it's a lie. Just outright, it's a lie. So the only thing that the Village of Tuckahoe is doing right now is putting forth legislation to ensure that 10% of any new units are set aside as affordable units. That's it. Okay?
So, I think we, we, we could consider having an information session as well, because it seems that lots of folks don't understand, you know, how do you take schools into consideration, roads, you know, any kind of thing that you're burdening with a development, you know, so I think we'd be happy to talk about that at a different-
Yeah, so I think, um, so maybe, I don't know, David, Gary, if we could, should we maybe have some information at the next public hearing, before we begin the, the hearing, instead of having another meeting, right? Like a presentation? So we'll do that, so that way, everyone has facts to, to draw from. And also, I'd ask that you please read the actual, uh, local law that's, it's up on our site, so that you can take a look at it. If you have further questions, you can contact any one of us, and we'll be happy to answer all of the questions that come, that either came here today, or that you email or contact us about at the next session. How's that? Thank you. And I appreciate everybody coming forward, some good questions asked, um, some good information that we can put together and be able to share with the community. Okay, so the, the hearing will remain open, and the next thing is the adoption of the minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2022, meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and, um, so we have the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items, and we've already had the public hearing items, so I'd ask if you have any other agenda items to come forward with, you can, you may do so now. So we'll move on to resolutions, and the first one is fun stuff. May I have a motion authorizing a block party request from Maple Avenue on July 4th from 1 to 8, with the rain date of July 10th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Are we invited, is the question I have.
Got you an invite.
Okay. The second, uh, resolution is authorizing the mayor to execute a fireworks performance contract with fireworks by Grucci for Saturday, July 9th, in the amount of $14,250. We have not had our fireworks, um, 4th of July fireworks for a number of years, and we got several requests from the residents, and so may I have a motion to resume that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And, uh, the third resolution, uh, may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with Westchester County for the award of $175,000, CDBG contract for playground upgrades in Main Street?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the next, uh, resolution is pretty exciting, authorizing the award of bid, Main Street Park Playground and Tennis Court Improvements to Vernon Hills Contracting Corporation in the amount of $630,000. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Resolution Number 5, authorizing an official request for, to the Westchester County Department of Planning to reconsider the CDBG grant for playground updates at Union Place. If you recall, we did submit a grant application for upgrades to the Union Place, uh, Park, and we, it was denied, and so we are considering, maybe if there's a little extra money left in the, in the, in the budget, we might be able to, um, get this, this, pass this go round. So may I have a motion to reapply?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we do have one tax cert today, may I have a motion, um, for this tax cert settlement with Guian Street LLC for assessment years 2018 to 19, um, in the amount of $2,706?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I remember when these were $200,000, David. Good job. May I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the Town of Eastchester, the Village of Bronxville, and Tuckahoe, and the Eastchester Union Free School Districts for street resurfacing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Any abstentions? And the next IMA, authorizing the mayor to, uh, enter into an IMA with the Town of Eastchester for 2022 sidewalk and curb replacement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have two vehicles for sale, so may I have a motion for Resolutions 9 and 10 for the surplus of sale for a 2015 Dodge Charger and a 2014 Ford Explorer, to the highest bidder for both.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Resolution Number 10, I think, David, I'll ask you to talk a little bit about the, I'm sorry, 11, uh, authorizing the, uh, New York Class Program. Can you talk a little bit about that?
This is actually a program that's been around for nearly, nearly 30 years, um, that I just kinda learned about, and that several of municipalities are already, already using. It's basically a program that has short-term liquid investments that are all, um, approved by New York State. So if you, you know, kinda get into the finances of New York State, municipalities are very limited on what type of investments we are allowed to put our money in, and it needs to all be collateralized and everything else. So this is actually a pool of all these investments, and what's the interesting thing about this is, is that it actually has interest daily. So a lot of times, they say if you have a large payroll and you need to take out $250,000 prior to the end of the month, you actually don't get the interest on that. So at least this, if we do have some money in here, we get an interest daily. So it's not gonna be a financial windfall for the village, um, but with interest rates, you know, so low right now in regards to just having money in the bank, it'll just, you know, it'll help out a little bit. So it's, again, it's, it's all New York State sanctioned program, and it'll just, you know, help us gain a little bit more interest on our money.
Okay. May I have a motion authorizing us to enter into this New York Class Program? So moved?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the Resolution Number 12, authorizing the closing of the following capital projects as of June 13, 2022, for the library chiller and two police vehicles. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Resolution Number 13, to pay the bills, may I have a motion approving the vouchers in the amount of $308,127.47.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we'll move on to departmental reports. Chief, will you come up first?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just several announcements. First, I wanted to talk about our, our system of security cameras and license plate readers that were installed, uh, probably about 18 months ago, and over the course of that time, we used these, uh, devices to solve some of the crimes that had been committed. It was a deterrent for many crimes. Um, actually, if you look in our, um, impound yard, there's a stolen truck that was just recovered, uh, because of this device. So what happens is the license plate readers are, um, linked to a, uh, real-time crime center at Westchester County. If a stolen car or wanted car passes through an intersection that has the devices, they notify us right away. We're able to stop the car, and in this case, it was a stolen truck, and recover a stolen truck that, um, was stolen, I believe, out of Massachusetts. So it's been very successful for us in solving crimes and preventing crimes, but we always knew that there'd be a humanitarian component to these, to these devices. And about three weeks ago, there was an elderly couple who, um, went missing. Uh, they had been driving around for literally 12 hours. They had left the Bronx and became disoriented, uh, crossed over the George Washington Bridge and back four times over the course of those 12 hours. Gassed up, but never had the wherewithal to ask for assistance. Luckily, their family notified the Suffolk County, uh, Police Department, who, uh, then notified, uh, surrounding jurisdictions, including New York City Police Department, who was tracking their phone. However, the phone went dead, battery went, died over that period of time, so they were relying on license plate readers to try to track them. It was last seen, the car was last seen northbound on the Henry Hudson Parkway, uh, heading towards Westchester, and in turn, they notified Westchester County Police, who put it into their license plate readers. Lo and behold, they passed the intersection at, uh, Main and Marble Dell. Westchester County notified us right away, the vehicle stopped on Main Street. We were able to provide aid to, to the couple and reunite them with their family after, uh, driving around for 12 hours. So, uh, for us, it was a, it was a really field-
Wow, yeah. Not a, that deserves an applause.
I just wanted to announce that, uh, two of our recruits, Daniel Bellis and Brandon Bellis, graduated the Police Academy on May 29th. Uh, they have been field training with us now, and they're about halfway through their field training, so we would expect them to be out on the streets on their own in about three or four weeks, so welcome to, welcome to Daniel and Brandon.
Yes.
Congratulations.
I was happy to say that we participated in the Bronxville Memorial Day Parade, um, held on Memorial Day, I think it was the anniversary parade for them, our motorcycle unit, as well as, uh, a couple of our members marched in the parade, so we were really happy to participate, as well as attend all the ceremonies that the veterans had at the various monuments in Tuckahoe and Eastchester, so we were very proud to participate in all of those ceremony, ceremonies, and of course, honor our, um, members of the military who gave the ultimate sacrifice. On June 4th, uh, was our bike event at the Main Street Park. We had a beautiful weather day, and it was really well-attended. We also did our child safety seat inspections and installations on that day, it was a great day. We also did our child safety seat inspections and installations on that day. It was a great day. We had a lot of fun. And, uh, we gave away about twelve bicycles as part of a raffle. And, uh, so at least made twelve, uh, young people.
They were hand, they were, they were hanging on tight to some of those bikes.
Sure were. Uh, Police Officer Anthony Solano and, uh, Police Officer Pete Costa participated this past Saturday at Malvern's Youth Community Outreach Program Event. Uh, once again, Anthony, uh, our in-house chef, created some, uh, Italian specialties and, uh, and put it out there. And, and, uh, I want to thank Donna Brown for always inviting us to this event. And, uh, we were really happy to participate.
Nice. Nice.
Uh, last week, and it's been a busy few weeks, last week was our accreditation audit. It's a process where New York State comes down, uh, every five years, uh, with three assessors to go over all of our policies and procedures, uh, that meet a hundred and ten standards set by Department of Criminal Justice Services. Uh, it's a process that literally began five years ago, uh, to make sure that not only do we have sound policies in place that are best practices and meet all the more recent law changes, but that we do what we say we are doing. So we, we have to document and put in place all of the, all of the documentation over five years. Uh, our program manager is Detective Emily, um, Yankowski. She does an unbelievable job. Uh, this past year, she had the bigger challenge of, because we were shorthanded, having to work her patrol duties full-time as well as try to manage the accreditation program. Uh, she came here several evenings, uh, after work to get it done. Uh, and she did a wonderful job. So I just want to say, we passed with flying colors. Uh, the assessors had very kind words to say about the Police Department. And, uh, every single member of the department bought, has bought into the program. And that's what makes it so successful. From the newest member to the most, you know, seasoned veteran. Um, it's a hundred percent buy-in. And with Emily, uh, coordinating all of our processes, um, it's a very smooth process.
And Chief, how many departments are accredited currently?
About a third.
That's a few.
About thirty-three percent in New York State. So for us to be accredited, I, I think it's a feather in our cap. I think it, it shows that we are, it's a progressive way for us to, um, stay on top of things. It forces us, uh, to be, you know, on our game, so to speak. And, uh, we really have benefited from the program quite a bit. And, uh, and again, it's, it's really due to the fact that there's a, a buy-in from every member of the department.
Yeah, that's great.
And the last bit of good news is, uh, and something that, uh, I'm a police officer nearly forty years. And during my whole tenure, I've never seen it. Uh, I've heard about it, is, uh, two of our members delivered a baby, uh, these two weeks ago. So, of course, congratulations to mom and dad and to the beautiful little girl that was born. Uh, but a special thanks, um, to Detective Steve Leoni and to Police Officer Brian Madden. It was great teamwork. They were on the ground, um, following the directions from a, uh, Westchester County EMS dispatcher, who was kind of walking them through the process. And then evac came with the paramedic and, um, you know, took it from there. So, uh, but, uh, those two officers literally delivered the baby and they did a great job.
Awesome.
Congratulations to all. That's all I have for tonight.
Yep. That's all.
That's all.
That's enough.
And I have to say, Chief, that I met with the, um, the director, I guess, was the, the retired chief, chief of police. And we talked for a while. And what I really like about this program is that, you know, you really, for in a department to be open to looking under the hood and exposing it and, um, being okay with recommendations that might say we have to do things a little differently is really, it's, it's, it's telling what kind of department we have. So I really thank you for being open to that and not being, you know, fearful that, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna look under the hood and we're gonna have some problems. That you're like, no, let's do that. Let's look at it and see what can we do better? And that we're always looking to do better. So I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you. Superintendent DeMarco? DPW?
I just have a couple of items that I just want to update everybody on. Uh, the Blink electric vehicle charging stations, they're progressing. We're getting them mostly installed. We're about eighty percent completed. As you drive and you can probably see them, they're, they're green and black and they'll have Blink all over them. Right now, we have them at the Fisher Avenue Parking Lot, at the base of Dante along Columbus Avenue, Main Street Parking Lot, uh, Lake Avenue Parking Lot. We're working on Depot Square right now. And, uh, next, we're probably going to be going into Oak Street Parking Lot. So again, most of them have been installed or will be installed, uh, by this coming week. And we're just waiting on ConEd to power these units up. Secondly, uh, the project, uh, I, I really want to talk about the Beautification Committee because they do a tremendous amount of work in the village. And people really don't see what they really do. They see a lot of beautiful sights, hanging plants. This is the Beautification Committee with Susan Chiamata, the head of the committee. And they're always looking to, uh, beautify the village in every little thing they do. And they're looking at every little thing in the village because I know, they tell me. But la, uh, last but not least, the project that they worked on last was, uh, the gateway area coming at the base of Tuckahoe Road into Garrett. Uh, we started with a monument, uh, a Tuckahoe stone there. We hung a welcome to Tuckahoe sign. And we wanted to expand a little bit on it. So we put a fence around it, uh, with, with some beautiful landscaping. So these are some of the areas that the Beautification Committee is also working on, uh, with DPW and accomplishing throughout the village. So, uh, you know, they're always looking for donations for those that can help the Beautification Committee. I say, please, uh, they do need the assistance.
Good plug. Thanks, Frank. Elaine, would you like to give the library report?
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Elaine Provenzano from the Tuckahoe Library on behalf of Swadish Pashnanda. Um, Swadish wanted to thank the community fund for the grant in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars.
Yeah.
And I think when I came five years ago, I think it was maybe six thousand, three thousand. So it's quite a, quite an accomplishment. With their support, we're able to offer adult and children's yoga, meditation, art, and cooking classes, hotspots, um, and many other special educational programs. And some of the things that we're planning to use this money for next year, in addition to the summer reading programs, we now have ukulele. I told you about, that's coming. You'll be seeing that live. Um, we're ESL programs, um, and then again, a continuation of a lot of our, our, uh, recurring programs. Also, we received the final check in the amount of thirty-eight fifty, three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from New York State for the replacement of the chiller. Thanks to the mayor, trustees, David and Frank for their support to get the project done before the deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. No pressure. Just going to tell you a few things that are going to happen, just a couple. Summer reading is coming. So the Bubble Bus is coming on June twenty-second at four P M. So for ages zero to eleven, feel free to dress up like a mermaid, fish, crab, pirate, sailor, or come as you are. Join us for games, prizes, dancing, and more. And that is in the library parking lot. For teens, we have twenty thousand Leagues Under the Sea Pizza Party. Ages eleven and up on Monday, June twenty-seventh at four thirty. Join your friends for Pizza Party and learn about all the great teen programs, games, and prizes. One of the programs we have for the teens is Cook Like a TV Chef. So everything is up on the website. You can check it out under Events, Summer Reading.
Pretty cool.
And then for adults, we don't want any adults to feel left out. Oceans of Possibilities, Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at six thirty. Join fellow book lovers in the Reading Garden for our summer reading kickoff. Enjoy light refreshments and mocktails while you learn about great summer reading programs. And if any of you have been in our Reading Garden talking about Tuckahoe Beautification, you want to come over there. Couple of programs happening tomorrow, June fourteenth, What Happens When Someone Dies Without a Will? That's online at two P M. And then on Thursday, What Is Juneteenth with author Chanel Mary? That's Thursday at six thirty, ages fourteen and up. Join poet and educator Chanel Mary on Zoom for an evening of history, verse, and activism to celebrate our nation's newly recognized national holiday. And then finally, on June twenty-seventh, Plant Powered Metro New York, an online program, is growing a local movement by educating and empowering people about whole food and plant-based nutrition. If you have any questions about any other events, you can go to our calendar. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you.
Yeah. Camille, do you have anything?
Just a reminder that village taxes are due June thirtieth.
Village taxes are due June thirtieth, she said. Not me, she said that. Gary? David?
I got a, a couple of items. One, um, thing, most residents will be receiving a letter in the mail from Westchester Power in regards to electricity rates. So if you recall, we're part of the Westchester, um, Community Choice Aggregation Program. And that's where we get our default energy supply from. Um, we recently, the board recently, uh, passed a resolution to re-up that program. Unfortunately, they've gone out and tried to get bids for new electricity rates and they could not find something that was within their parameters. Obviously, with the volatility of the electricity rates, um, they just couldn't get anything. So what will happen? Nobody's power will be shut off. We won't really actually see anything, but you'll receive a letter from Westchester Power saying that the supply side is then going to come from ConEd and you'll see actually a difference in rates. Um, at that point, you're more than welcome to go see if you can get an ESCO or something like that. But unfortunately, at this point, the, the, there's a pause in that program. Bronxville is going to be doing some smoke testing next week. And basically, it's just a smoke bomb they put into the sewer system, see if there's any illegal connections. Um, how their sewer system and ours match up. Some of the smoke testing will actually take place in the Park Avenue area, um, Union, Jefferson, Washington. So a letter will be given to residents in that area. Again, it's just, um, it's a non-toxic smoke that just helps detect any leaks or cracks in the pipes. And real quick, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple of employees. So I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago and, and talking with other managers and administrators, we were talking about the FEMA process and how hard it is for the FEMA process. And more than one community basically has given up on it. It is, it is cumbersome. They ask for so much information. And so just so the residents know, if any, you know, a natural disaster happens or even COVID, um, FEMA comes in and sets up a declaration and then we can kind of put in for reimbursement of costs. But it is hard. It takes a long time. And in regards to COVID, Lieutenant Zerolnik put in a valiant effort. And hopefully, we are at the last step of getting over a hundred thousand dollars of reimbursement. It's real, it's a, it's a lot of money to the village. And then Frank DeMarco, who has taken the step on numerous FEMA applications. I mean, he spends more time on, on FEMA than he does anything else. And we just got assigned off on a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar reimbursement. So it's a lot of hard work, but it's a lot of payoff for the village. So just thank you to those two employees.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Um, and I think that's it. So we have some miscellaneous business that's not so miscellaneous. We have the Juneteenth Festival at Main Street Park on June eighteenth at one P M. Um, everyone is welcome. Tuckahoe Fireworks and also our one hundred and twentieth anniversary celebration will be, uh, held on July ninth at Parkway Oval. We will have, uh, several activities. We're looking to possibly do some, uh, history tours on the trolley and some activities for the kids. So come out on June ninth at, to Parkway Oval. And I think that starts at four, I'm sorry, July ninth. At what time, David? Four, yeah. Our next village board meeting will be on July eleventh at seven P M. And movie nights, backed by popular demand, at Main Street Park on June twenty-fourth, July twenty-ninth, and August nineteenth. I believe the first movie is already set. Am I right? Is it Encanto? Encanto. So the first. Okay. So it's good if they get there early. July ninth, the fireworks and one hundred and twentieth anniversary celebration will be at five P M at Parkway Oval. There may be some cupcakes there, right, David? To celebrate. Okay, so, uh, we'll move on to the Board of Trustee Member Reports, so that we don't keep everyone here all night. So trustee Engelbert?
Okay, it's my, now my second report. Very exciting, exciting stuff. Okay. So we've already talked about Juneteenth, but, um, the community center, in the event, um, that there is rain, hopefully not like rain like we had last night, um, it'll be moved inside the Tuckahoe Community, Community Center. And that's Saturday, June eighteenth from one to six, six P M. On June twenty-eighth, from six A M to nine P M, the primary elections for the gubernatorial and state assembly will be held, um, at the community center. So if you are, um, qualified to vote in that election, please do. You know where it is. It's where Tuckahoe votes. Um, the restroom renovations continue and they are, David, they are nearly done now at this point. Yep, got brand-new bathrooms coming in, restrooms coming in the community center. Absolutely gorgeous. And just, just another plug for me on this. You're going to hear it every month from me about the community center. Open gym on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from one thirty to four, four P M. Let's go out and get, get those bodies moving in our beautiful community center. Okay, the second bit is on, on the library. And Elaine did such a wonderful job. It takes all the thunder out of my report, but that's good. That's a great, great thing. Uh, but I, I do want to take just a small moment to kind of raise the flag on summer slide, um, for, for our young people. The research says that, research says that students between third and fifth grade lose on average about twenty percent of their school year gains in reading and twenty percent, twenty-seven percent in math. Our public library has a rock star agenda of activities all summer long to help address kind of that, that summer slide. So get to the website, get engaged, get involved in all the amazing summer reading programs and summer activity programs that we have at our library. So let's keep those little minds engaged this, this summer. I do want to give a thank you to the DPW and the Police Department for helping out on some recent flooding that happened again at the library. The damage was controlled. Amazing. We have lots of eyes always watching in the village. And we got a head, head of a flood, head of that flood. But it's certainly a reminder that we got to keep those drains cleared, cleared out. I don't, um, envy having to take the screwdriver out and pull up the, the grates on those drains. But thank you very much for keeping our library safe. Last reminder, and you'll hear this again and again from me on the library, is that the Friends of the Public Library did sponsor those museum passes. You can take them out, just like you take out kind of a book, and find yourself with a free pass to the American Museum of Natural History, the Intrepid, Storm King, Storm King, and others. So head onto the, to the library and check out one of those free museum passes. Okay, so the last, next one is our wonderful history, history committee. And they provide such a wonderful report kind of each, each month. We want to, the history committee would like to thank the Historic Preservation Committee for their unanimous recommendation on June ninth, kind of just, just this past week, that the Ward House, um, be made, made a landmark. Nicholas Zanzano and our own Elaine Provenzano attended the Lower Westchester County Historian Roundtable at Saint Paul's Church in Mount Vernon, along with Richard Forliano, Barbara Davis, co-chair of the Westchester County Archives, and other members of local historical societies. This group will be meeting monthly to share best practice and promote local entities and resources. I mean, protecting what we have, it takes a lot of, a lot of work. And this committee really puts in the hard, hard work. Lot of projects going on with this, with this group. A special thanks to the Tuckahoe Senior Intern Tyler Thompson. I wish he was here, um, who helped digitize twenty folders of historic folders from the Tuckahoe Library Archives. Um, we're continuing to scan and archive all historic binders in Village Hall. You could see all those hundred and forty-eight binders that are out in the hallway, kind of here, um, scanning them and protecting them, not just for kind of tomorrow, but well out into the future. Um, they're working on design and budget for the new Village and History Committee website and reviewing several boxes of documents donated to the Tuckahoe History Committee from the records of Ernie, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Zochi. Zaki, thank you. Zaki, thank you. The Masonic Temple and the Pinto family. They also provide the Town Historian, Richard Forliano, and Eastchester High School senior interns with photos to use in the creation of historic Instagrams depicting the village and town. Look, kind of our social media and history committee live in harmony kind of together. And then Nick Zanzano gave a presentation in the Tuckahoe before and after to the Eastchester Rotary Club on Wednesday, May 11th. And we'll also be scheduling part two of this program to the Tuckahoe Seniors. That date is to be determined. Absolutely, as someone who likes good numbers, I appreciate this in each monthly report. May, for Facebook, seven posts garnered 5,636 views from over 1,000 followers. So that was the most popular, was the announcement of Nick Zanzano as a new village historian. And they want to thank all those that have provided original content and answers to our posts. Please follow them on Facebook. It's amazing stuff. And of course, if you have any photos or items you want to share, please contact tuckahowarchive@gmail.com. And the history committee meets on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12:00. They need a lot of times. They're doing so much stuff at the Village Hall, and contact information is available on the Village website. Last bit, and I know I'm talking too long, and David's going to take out the hook and take me kind of off. Last thing is the Tuckahoe Schools. Some of this is a bit in the past, but just a reminder, the budget passed. 364 yes, 151 no, with the Board of Trustees Gardari and Becky re-elected, which is wonderful. Congratulations to Tuckahoe. And there are many awards ceremonies happening this week, but I won't steal any thunder from the mayor kind of on that. But there was eighth grade awards.
Liaison, you can report on it.
I can steal your thunder kind of on that. But the mayor's award was offered, was given or presented to Ryan Gentry this evening on his kind of kindness and empathy kind of given out to the community, which really, in times like today, kind of a little compassion and empathy and kindness is an absolutely good thing. And graduation is June 21st, with moving up ceremonies on the 22nd and 23rd. So congratulations to all the kind of students who are making their way kind of in the world from Tuckahoe. So that's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Engelbert. Deputy Mayor Howell?
This month's zoning board meeting was held June 8th. Items that were discussed were an area variance at 235 Alpine Terrace for an addition to the existing structure, and a special permit for 31 and 33 Main Street for the creation of a new dance studio. I wanted to take this opportunity to say a special thanks to Nathan Jackman, who has served on the zoning board since September of 2015, and he's now leaving the village, moving to Greenwich, Connecticut. Nathan's work has been really, always of the highest integrity on that board, and he's been an amazing asset, and he will be missed. But we wanted to wish him all the best in his next adventure. The next planning board meeting will be Tuesday, June 21st at 7:30. There are several items on the agenda there. First is the amendment of a previous site plan at 30 Elm Street. This is the Pyramid Squash Court Building, and that is to add a party room to the building. So that's right up against a residential neighborhood. So residents who are interested may want to attend that meeting. Two other items are a subdivision at 25 Main Street. So that is the building that is right next to the train station. And also, the site plan for the dance studio on Main Street will be reviewed. There's still an open ad hoc position for the planning committee, so please contact me if you're interested. As trustee Engelbert mentioned, in June, the meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission had its first application before it for the ward house. They have now approved that, and that will move to this board to take action on that. So it's very exciting for the entire community. And I've had a lot of people ask me how they can get involved with all things concerning the ward house. So I wanted to remind folks that a group of concerned citizens has formed a Friends organization, a nonprofit, and I encourage you to go to their webpage, www.wardhousefriends.org, and understand how you can become involved. As we mentioned, it is the end of the school year, and so I wanted to wish both, all the students from both school districts congratulations on all their accomplishments and best wishes for great success in your future. Both school districts elected new board members for the school board, and I just also wanted to wish them well as they will start their new term in July. It's a very particularly tough time, I think, for school boards, and so thank them for taking on that responsibility. Eastchester students were in the news recently for their leadership, so I wanted to highlight those efforts. First was Kushbu Dulani, a senior who organized a vigil for the students and staff who were slain at the recent mass school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. This was picked up by Channel 12 News, and I just wanted to, you know, really thank Kushbu for, at a time when most people are thinking about all the end-of-the-school-year activities and graduating, that she took the time to put this together and recognize that. The Eastchester LGBTQ+ focused organization, the Gay-Straight Alliance, was recognized with a Leadership Award from Westchester County Executive George Latimer for their efforts on bringing information and awareness about the group to the larger school community. So I wanted to acknowledge them as well. As you'll hear on this meeting, as you've seen, you know, we usually take on interns. The DPW has really done a great job over the years, and we've had different departments in the village take on interns. But this is the first year, I believe, that members of the board have had interns. So I was lucky enough to get the Eastchester Saluditorian Jenna Handel to serve as my intern, and I just wanted to really thank her. She came in, she set up our website for the Tuckahoe Challenge. She designed the shirt. She designed the posters. She wrote a letter for the businesses to solicit for sponsorships, and she went out and walked, you know, through the village and met with all of the businesses face to face. And she just did an amazing job. So this is her last week. I'm really going to miss her. So just wanted to thank her for that. As you've heard too, we've had many amazing community activities. So just a shout out to the police, you know, for Bike Safety Week, delivering babies, getting accredited, all the wonderful stuff they do. The VFW hosted a really moving program at Bronxville High School the day before Memorial Day. And, you know, they really do a lot to involve the community and the local students in it. And I was sitting with a high school student who remarked to me that they wish they had this information and had given it out, you know, to their friends because they thought it would, you know, it would have been something that a lot of students would like to see. So I think next year, we should do, yeah, do some, give some help to connect the two. I also wanted to give a shout out to the incredibly adorable Axelbaum Kids for staffing the Tuckahoe Kids Table and raising $400 in their first effort. Really, really amazing. So the Tuckahoe Challenge will be held September 18th on a Sunday. Registration is open on run sign up. Posters are up in area businesses with QR codes, so you can register right as you're walking down the street. And I wanted to remind everybody, you need to register by August 1st to get a shirt, your shirt size guaranteed. And in July, we'll be announcing some walking and running training opportunities. As we heard, primary elections are, the first one, there'll be two in New York this year due to all of the craziness with redistricting. The first one for the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, US Senate, and New York State Assembly will be on June 28th. And then on August 23rd, the primary for Congress and New York State Senate will be held. I'm looking forward to the Juneteenth celebration this Saturday, and I wanted to wish all the dads out there Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Trustee Taylor?
Excuse me, thank you, ma'am. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority had their quarterly meeting on May 17th. Director Irene Matzvicki reported that the renovations and repairs caused by Hurricane Ida to the community room, the hot water heaters and the boilers have all finally been taken care of. There was extensive damage to the housing authority, and it took quite a while for all of these things to be repaired, but they are finally all repaired. The Housing Authority's Tennis Association will be having their annual Family Day on Saturday, August 20th, with the rain date of Sunday, August 21st. It is an awesome event. They brought it back last year, and it was a great time. And everybody in this village is invited. It's not just for the people who live in the housing authority. The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, they started their spring tennis in the park, sponsored by Ecap and B Tennis for the after-school kids with Coach Brian. It's Saturdays 10 to 11:30, and it goes until June 21st. They have their summer camp, which starts July 6th to August 17th, ages 7 to 12 years old. And there are still a couple of spots left. For more info for the camp, call 914-337-7768. And then the Summer Youth Employment, ages 14 to 24. This program also has a couple of jobs left. So if your kid needs a job, and it's 14 to 24, which is great because usually, it didn't go all the way up to 24 years old. So you can contact Ecap at the same number, 914-337-7768. The Veterans Report. On May 21st, the veterans had a flag placement at the Mount Hope Cemetery at the graves of all of our fallen heroes. On May 22nd, the veterans attended a mass at the MacLauchon Conception Church, followed by a ceremony at the EFT Monument honoring the firefighters who had served in the EFT and had gone on to glory. On that same day, there was also a private ceremony by the veterans of Eastchester and Tuckahoe. Vito Pinto, Bob Forster, Eastchester Town Supervisor Tony Colavita, and myself presented Fidel Plastini with a shadow box for his efforts at the Battle of the Bulge, which was in World War II. It was absolutely awesome to see his reaction to get the shadow box. For those of you who don't know what a shadow box is, it has all of his patches and his medals that he got from serving in World War II. He was absolutely overwhelmed, and it was celebrated by him and his family, children, grandchildren, and I believe there might have been great-grandsons there. On Sunday, May 29th, I had the pleasure of being part of the Memorial Day Ceremony commemorating the 80th anniversary of the Doolittle Reed. This was at Bronxville High School. The theme was, "There is nothing stronger than the heart of a volunteer." Than the heart of a volunteer. It was a great program put on by the veterans, and I believe the youth who did the singing stole the show. And then on Memorial Day, the Eastchester Tuckahoe veterans, along with Police Department, our mayor, Andino, trustee Cronin, trustee Engelbert, and myself. Trustee Renee was away, so she couldn't attend. But we had the pleasure of marching in the Bronxville Village 100th Anniversary Memorial Day Parade. It was an honor to march and help Bronxville celebrate their 100th anniversary. Mayor Marvin and her staff did an excellent job with the parade. Immediately after the parade, trustee Cronin and myself, along with the Tuckahoe PD, were honored to attend the Reef Lane Presentations by our veterans at all the memorial monuments in our village. And on tomorrow, Tuesday, 14th, Tuesday the 14th at 5:00 PM, at the VFW Post 2285 and the American Legion Post 979, the veterans invite all the community members to celebrate Flag Day at the American Legion Post, located at 40 Bell Road in Eastchester. There will be a flag retirement ceremony and a barbecue sponsored by the Tuckahoe Police Department. The AC Jeffries Post, which is here in Tuckahoe, VFW Post here in Tuckahoe, is still actively seeking new members. Anyone interested in joining should contact Quartermaster Edward Stowe at 914-260-3980. The AC Jeffries Post is still closed, and they need new members to help get it back open. And I just want to say a special thanks to all the veterans and their committees for all their contributions in organizing the programs and the ceremonies. Quickly, congrats to our Tuckahoe PD for their accreditation and their bike safety program. I was away, wasn't unable to attend, but one of the residents told me that she was able to win a bicycle for her 11-year-old grandson, and she was very happy about that. Congrats to the Bellis Brothers on completing the Police Academy and are now in training, and that's also a great job by them. Thank you to all the interns from Eastchester High School on their work at the DPW. And on a different note, sad note, we had one of the matriarchs of Tuckahoe who I've known my whole life, Lavinia Hampton, the matriarch of the Hampton family, passed away recently. She was well-known in the village and will surely be missed. And lastly, congrats to all of the graduating students from both, all of the Tuckahoe Schools and Eastchester Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. I said, "Thank you, trustee Taylor." Go right ahead, trustee Cronin. Sorry. You didn't go yet, I can't thank you yet.
No, that's true. Okay, so the Tuckahoe Seniors have their, they have their first annual end-of-year lunch Thursday, the 16th, that's this week, at Mama Assunta. The cost is $45. You can reach out to Jennifer Vettermile if you're interested in attending. On a sad note, last week, longtime resident Irene DiNucci passed away. She was 102 years old. We all send condolences to her family, along with the family of Ms. Lavinia Hampton, who was 94. May their memories be a blessing. The Senior Citizens Council is still doing their annual appeal, and they, you know, they are the parent organization for the Tuckahoe Seniors. So if you would like to donate and have not, please consider doing so at SCC70.org. I'd just like to reiterate what Frank DiMarco said about the Beautification Committee. If you have walked around this village, it is beautiful and it's blooming. And that is really very much a testament to the hard work and dedication of the Beautification Committee, but also to the DPW, who works alongside the Beautification Committee. You will notice the hanging geraniums and the planters basically everywhere in the village, and it is, really does lighten and brighten up the community. So again, if you haven't joined the Instagram or Facebook pages, if you don't follow them for the Beautification Committee, please consider doing so. And there you will find the link to their fundraising website, and they are still very much trying to raise money so that they can complete their fall and winter projects, which are, you know, the wreaths and other projects for the fall. So speaking of fundraising, the Tuckahoe Kids Table, which was presented on a couple months ago, which was by Hudson Axelbaum and his parents, raised $411 on Sunday at the farmer's market. And that money goes to both the Beautification Committee and one of my other favorite committees, the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee. So thank you to Hudson and his family, and thank you to Megan Kennedy and Adrian Michelle for helping out. And this is really where community comes together and helps out as much as possible. So thank you to all, everyone who's involved. If you haven't made it to the farmer's market yet, it is open. Please go and visit and check out the Kids Table. And if you are interested, if you have a young child in your household who would be interested in helping to raise money for the community, you can reach out to Hudson Axelbaum's family, Sarah Axelbaum. So Juneteenth is this weekend, which is, by the way, is now a federal holiday, and is celebrated on the 20th, so most schools... a federal holiday and is celebrated on the 20th. So most schools and businesses will be closed on the 20th. But Juneteenth, the actual day of Juneteenth is Sunday, which is also Father's Day. Happy Father's Day to everybody. So the celebration will be on Saturday. The Juneteenth Committee is dedicating this event to our lost friend and neighbor Cassie Savage, who passed away suddenly in the spring. There is a teen-youth event run in conjunction with the Tuckahoe Library. I believe it's on June 14th. Is that correct? June 14th, which will talk about getting involved in your community and activism within your community. So young people, both teenager, young teenagers, adolescents and young adults are encouraged to attend that. And that's done on Zoom, right? Okay. And the Juneteenth event will be on, in Main Street Park at 1 o'clock. I want to also thank the veterans for a wonderful program honoring their fallen comrades, the Reef Lane and Bronsville for inviting us to their 100th Anniversary Parade. It was a lot of fun. The Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee wants you to know that the ordinance, the B Ordinance that we passed has now been fully approved in New York State and you can apply for your B keeping permit if you are so interested. On May 14th, the River Sweeper, the River Keeper Sweep event took place and this was a huge success. While it might have been a little smaller than usual because it had to be postponed, they still collected 325 pounds of garbage from the river. So this is a really important event and they do it both in the, they do it every year. So please consider coming out and helping out. The committee would like to thank Haley McCrink and Maria Caposo, who are both serving as the liaisons from the Tuckahoe and the Eastchester School District. They are both graduating and going off to college and the committee wishes them the best. Speaking, speaking of students, I had the pleasure of taking on also a Tuckahoe senior, a Tuckahoe High School senior as an intern this year. Jason Napolitano and I got to work on the Tuckahoe Oral History Project. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of Mr. Napolitano. He, he really showed up and did an excellent job. Jason produced, starred in and edited four videos, which are the, which will be available on the YouTube channel that he created called the Oral, Tuckahoe Oral History Project. He exhibited initiative, dedication, professionalism and is a shining example of the incredibly young people that are being educated by our school. So thank you to the school for, and Mr. Casuano for, for doing this internship program and thank you to Jason and his family. Jason is off to, soon as we go, to study meteorology next year. So he will be missed, but he's off to do really great things. The YouTube channel will be available and live later this month. I just, you know, want to reiterate my colleagues' praise for the Tuckahoe PD, for their accreditation, for their, the new police officers, the Traffic and Safety Day, for having delivered babies and the Dare Graduation and Picnic run by Officer Evan, who the students really love and connect with so much. And it's such a meaningful experience for them to participate in Dare and they look so forward to the Dare Graduation and the Dare Picnic. So thank you to the TPD for all that you guys do in the community. And I'll stop there.
Oh, thank you. I just want to reiterate, thank you, a big thank you to Officer Piasta. I think he sometimes flies under the radar because he just works. And he did such an awesome job with the program, the Dare Program. I attended the graduation with several of the board members and I was really impressed with, you know, the kids' response to the program as well as his organizing the actual graduation, even though he was terribly nervous. He did an awesome, awesome job. So thank you to Officer Piasta for continuing this program and working with our kids. I also cannot let the evening go without saying a big congratulations to Hudson Axelbaum. If you guys remember this kid, he is freaking awesome. He came here months ago saying that he wanted to help the village and came up with this idea to have a Kids Table. He designed the logo for, for the banner. He came up with the idea of different kids coming and participating. He really is the epitome of what service to your community is and he's also a testament that you're never too young to do this. So if we all could follow in Hudson's footsteps, that would be, we would have a great Tuckahoe, not that we don't. He raised $411 and there still are some slots open. If you have kids who would like to participate and you're not really sure what you could have at the table, just go on to Facebook, if you're on social media, and look up Tuckahoe Kids Table. Send them a message and say you'd like to participate and I'm sure that Hudson and his mom would be very happy to help you figure out what you can do if you're interested in serving. I also want to thank our, my Eastchester High School senior who interned with the village, Riley Keating. Riley was the Regeneron, one of the Regeneron Award winners, which are very few, if you know anything about that award. And she wanted to come to, to intern because she wanted to learn more about public service and public office and with an interest in public relations and communication. So today she sent me a video, which I had to get her permission first to share. And she talked about what the experience was for her and I was really moved that she, she was just interested in, she sat in with my, with me during office hours and had meetings with me with, you know, anyone who came in. She listened and she talked about the things that she learned about public office and the challenges that she observed and how to manage, you know, relationships when people come to, to maybe even voice concerns. She also worked with the Building Department with Carolina Fonseca on our parking and meter project that we're working on to make sure that residents are aware of where there's parking through an app. So thank you to Riley Keating. And this evening, I want to give a special shout out to Ryan Gentry, which was mentioned earlier. Today, at the Tuckahoe Schools, they were doing the award ceremonies and he got the Mayor's Award for Kindness and Compassion. And I think that, today I said, you know, we often tout academic and leadership achievement, but you don't hear too many people saying, "Wow, you're so kind and compassionate," and to give an award for it. So I want to read what they sent me about Ryan so that everyone in Tuckahoe would know that Ryan received this award and he's worthy of it. "The Mayor's Award was given to a student who throughout the course of the year has consistently demonstrated kindness and compassion in his interaction with peers and teachers. This year's award recipient is Ryan Gentry. Ryan personifies these character traits. He possesses a keen awareness of the world around him and the importance of inclusiveness, resulting in his strong sense of concern and respect for those in the Tuckahoe Middle School community. We were all greatly impacted by having Ryan in our classroom." So it was really a pleasure for, for me and I went with Trustee Engelbert and Cronin to present that award to Ryan, who I was really proud to do so. Thank you, Ryan, for bringing kindness and compassion and making it, you know, kind of cool. I also want to let the village know that we are in the process of working with Concordia Conservatory. The executive director, Kathleen Suss, who's really awesome. She's always looking for ways that she can work in the schools and with our kids. And so the, they're working on creating a tuition-free music class for the Universal Pre-K Program, beginning in September. And I thought that, that's really awesome. We're working together with the Tuckahoe Schools and the Conservatory to bring free music classes for children. And you all know how beneficial it is for young people to learn an instrument or to be a part of the arts. And I didn't have that opportunity, so I'm learning to play the piano now. So I'm glad that we're catching those kids early. It's taken me a year to learn two songs, but that's okay. I'm trying to work up to a concert for, for Christmas. I'm only learning Christmas songs, that's it. I also want to reiterate what everyone said and I, you know, won't say it a million times, Chief, you're going to be like beet red, but I really, I enjoyed talking with the Accreditation Director, who talked a little bit about the process of the accreditation. And I'm, I'm going through accreditation at my job, so I know how tedious some of the work can be and presenting the information and gathering documents and all of that takes a lot of work. And so I was really impressed by his words. He said, you know, "I've go, I've been a chief of police. I'm retired. I go to a lot of different municipalities." And he goes, "And by far, this one is second to none." So thank you, Chief, again. And on a sadder note, I've gotten a few residents contacting me to ask about, or ask if we're doing anything regarding the school shootings that we've heard about. They want to know if there were, how we're safeguarding our children. So I've been talking with the chief and with the village administrator about the possibility of having a town hall or a forum to discuss what in Tuckahoe we're doing and how we partner with Eastchester, since our schools are in Eastchester, and also with Bronsville. So we're going to put something together to bring the community together to, to talk about, you know, what we as a community can do to have an impact on this. But I do want to have a few moments of silence and to acknowledge the shootings in Buffalo, leaving 10 dead and three wounded. And in Texas, where a total of 19 children and two teachers were killed. So if we could have a few moments of silence. Thank you. And also just congratulations to all of the graduates. I've been hearing and getting a lot of messages about people graduating from high school, graduate school, kindergarten. I'm excited. It's an exciting time for our students. So congratulations to all from the entire village board. And that leaves us with a second opportunity to address the board. If anyone has anything that you'd like to address the board. Elaine?
I would be remiss. We also had an intern, Malika Hanzalari, for six weeks, six wonderful weeks. Like you say, we're really going to miss her. So we want to thank her for her dedication to, especially to the circulation at the library. Maybe some of you saw her when you were there. And best wishes to her and to all the graduates. On a personal note, I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Ward House. I'm the secretary and my husband is the president. And we have also Richard Forliano and Liz Lecky is the former village, Tuckahoe Village Historian, is on our board as well, as well as Dr. Ed Powers. So we would like to thank the Historic Preservation Commission for the unanimous vote to recommend that the Ward House receive local landmark status and look forward to the final vote in the coming months. This treasure is recognized not only in our village, listed in the Tuckahoe Comprehensive Plan as a historic structure in the village, but throughout Westchester and New York, as well as achieving eligibility for the National Register in January. The Lower Westchester Historians Roundtable took place at St. Paul's Church last Tuesday, where Stephen Ward is buried. And it is believed, David Osborne told me, that he is believed to have named St. Paul's. And they are interested in the Ward House being included in plans for the 250th anniversary of the Revolution, just coming up in a few short years. If you believe in the importance of saving this treasure, help us to secure it. You may find out more information about its history, about volunteering and about donating at wardhousefriends.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name's Anthony Giacobi from 30 Longview Drive in Eastchester. I don't normally talk at board meetings. I feel like can conduct my business one-on-one with all you, but I thought that tonight, you know, this deserves some, the public to see what's going on here. As you know, last month, we had our school board elections here in the village and the town of Eastchester. You know, I was pretty disappointed on some of the rhetoric that I saw going on, you know, on social media by some of you up here. You know, it's, for decades, you know, it's been a general practice that the politicians stay out of these school board elections for very important reasons, right? Wouldn't need anybody's Republican politics or Democratic politics to meddle in these very important, you know, school board elections and our children's education. You still see politicians get involved and honestly, I really don't care what, what they say. That's one thing. It's another thing to, you know, spew false rhetoric about parents, mothers, fathers that are running for these school boards. And I was watching pretty closely this year because my wife was running. And, you know, it was pretty upsetting what I saw from some of you up here. You know, Ms. Engelbert, I saw a lot from you out there and also heard a lot of things that you said. I chose to ignore it. But I know you're new to this, but as a public official, it's very important that you help bring the community together, you know, and not try to divide us. You know, my generation with young kids here, that's what we're looking for. You know, I saw a lot of posts out there. One that really bothered me was on a Facebook page that many people are blocked from, but there's plenty of people that go in there and see what's going on. You know, you're telling residents to mark your calendars for when we will ask the board about, you know, some campaign pledges that these candidates made, all right? That's pretty divisive. It's not really, I don't really agree on, you know, an elected official doing that. You know, you should be going out there and seeing how you can bring these people together, how you can maybe work with these trustees that were elected and so they can meet their campaign pledges and use your experience here as a trustee to help them. So, I mean, as going forward, I ask that you try to bring people together and let's not try to divide people going forward. Ms. Howell, you know, last year when I ran for office, I often stuck up for you and when people said things about you. And the reason why I did that, because you often showed me respect and I wanted to show the scene back to you. But I was pretty disappointed in you on so many rhetoric that you were passing around last month. There was a Facebook post put out by SEPTA in Eastchester and I saw one of your comments and I have it here. I printed all this out, you know, and you said that you feel the PTA Council could do something similar over the disparaging posts about Senator and Mayor that Jonah and Jackie DeMarco made, especially in light of the impactful foundation aid. Now, Ms. Mayor, she, she can handle, you know, this herself. And there was no Facebook post made by Jackie DeMarco. I checked anywhere. And what Jonah did was, all he did was share a post about, about the Senator, about some mask issue, which we know is a very divisive issue right now. We, you know, we don't need an elected official going out there trying to divide the community, trying to throw trustees under the bus. And these people are volunteering their time. Another one I saw, which I saw you post probably more than five times, but I found five occasions, was about now trustee Lawler, when she went up to speak at a board meeting. And you kept posting this video. And anybody really with a little common sense knows what Michelle meant. And I know you know what she meant, but you tried to spin it a different way. You know, you were trying to paint her as a racist and anybody that saw this knew what she was saying. And what she was saying was, she was trying to bring the community together. And, you know, it's, it's time to stop telling our, you know, dividing our children right versus the left. Let's bring them together. Let's speak to them so we can make sure they understand what is right and wrong. And that's what she meant, but you kept on saying this and, you know, you said, "This does not appear to be a welcoming stance that supports that each child is a blessing." I hear a lot of intolerance in this BOE testimony from Ms. Lawler. Is this what this team will support? Obviously not. That is not what this team supports and the majority of the community agrees, but...
Mr. Giacobi, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up.
All right. You know, we've been here a while. So I have one more left. All right? And this one here hit home to me because my wife was involved with this. And you said, "History will repeat itself." And this was about was, you know, what some people call book banning. But what these candidates were saying was, they don't want certain books in our libraries, you know, that are pretty pornographic. And everybody has their opinion on this. If you're into that, that's fine with me. I really don't care. My family is not. A lot of families aren't. And they don't agree having certain books in the libraries where young children can see. And you should respect that position. And you basically compared these candidates to Nazis. And that was pretty disrespectful, especially that my wife was involved in this. And I think you deserve, these candidates deserve an apology. And nobody should ever be compared to a Nazi because they don't want a pornographic book in the middle school library. All right? Does anybody, does everybody agree with that up here?
Well, we're not here to agree or disagree. We're here to hear, hear your comments.
Yeah, she knows. So I just ask going forward, as elected officials, anybody, Republican, Democrat, let's please bring our community together. People are running for these school boards. They're volunteering their time. Everybody has an opinion. They're entitled to opinion. You all are, we all are. And let's do what we can to bring people together. These Facebook posts are seen by a lot of people in town. A lot of kids in town see these things. They talk about it. Their parents talk about it. The kids hear what they're talking about. And you need to be role models. All right? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
So can we comment?
Yeah, you can. You can.
So I'll go, mine's quick.
Okay.
And then Renee. So, so we left. Okay. So I do want to respond to Anthony's concern about my Facebook post. Okay, so I do want to respond to Anthony's concern about my Facebook post about marking your calendars to hold elected officials accountable to the promises that we made. That is actually a very kind of deeply personal post that I put on Facebook. If you go back on my trustee page, I have a number of different videos. I made it very clear during my own campaign that I wanted you to hold me accountable to the promises that I made during my own, own campaign. It's a sacred trust between like the things that politicians are going to put out there and you as constituents and residents, holding us accountable for doing the things that we say that we're going to do. And so in that Facebook post, it was all about, "Let's do this," or "Let's do that," to kind of give the new trustees a bit, a bit of a, I don't want to say a hard time, but kind of a difficult kind of transition. I was like, "No, take the signs down and mark your calendars to hold the trustees accountable kind of when we get to the end of their, end of their term." I think that's actually about kind of bringing communities together behind trustees, about what their campaign platform is, and to say, "This is what they're going to do." Have you done kind of those things? That is a productive conversation, from my perspective, between the residents of a community and the officials that are elected into office. In no way was it meant to kind of harass the trustees, but to kind of pivot a conversation from kind of unproductive nature to one where we look at our trustees in, in an effective way.
Okay, thank you. And Trust, Deputy Mayor, if you want to say the last word?
Yes, I would. There were many things that were misrepresented in Mr. Giacobi's, whatever, presentation it was. So I just wanted to note that for someone to get up and say they wanted to build community and then put a lot of misinformation out there, I don't think that's, you know, a great example of what you're, what you're attempting to, to discuss. So I will tell you a few things here. So Shelley Mayor and I have been involved in the Eastchester Schools for a very long time in advocacy for money. Shelley Mayor, along with Amy Pollan, have done an amazing job, for the first time, getting our schools the money that they have long been deserved from student foundation, from the foundation aid. There was a Facebook post by sitting board members of, who were at the time on the Eastchester School Board, and I have that post, which anyone would like to see, where Jackie DeMarco calls Senator Mayor disgusting for taking a picture without a mask on. And at the time, Jonah also made really disparaging remarks about her, and I did speak out about that, and I, I very much disagree with people on the school board disparaging their state senator for taking a momentary picture at a PTA event without a mask on. So I stand by that. And as far as banning books, I do believe that is a slippery slope, and I was pointing out historical context of other times that books were banned. That was all the commentary I put on Facebook. So I just wanted to say that it's really important for people to get the information. I am willing to share the accurate posts that were made with anyone who, who would like to see them.
Okay. Okay, and on that note, Tuckahoe, we will, you have something? Okay.
Dave, would you like to make an announcement about Monday for the Juneteenth recognition for the village? Whether the village employees are working, is the village closed on Monday?
The village is closed.
I think maybe you guys should make that announcement.
Okay.
Yes, the village will be closed on Monday in regards, in celebration of Juneteenth, that's the day before.
Yeah. All right. So just a reminder that the next board meeting will be on July 11th at 7:00 PM at Village Hall. And that's all for tonight. Tuckahoe, have a good night.